Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, everyone. I am Chair and Green Middleton, Vice President of the Council, Representative of the Sixth Council District, and I serve as Chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We are here this afternoon for the following bills: 21-0079, 21-0089, and 21-0105. In attendance, we have members of the committee. Councilman John Bullock of the Seventh District. Hi, John.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Nice, I'm sorry.
I got you.
We have Councilman Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have Councilman Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And for now, those are the members of the committee that I see that are present. We also have members of the Council President's Office. Nikki Thompson, Director of Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I see Lucy Font, the Staff Assistant for Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I see Matt Stegman, Director of Fiscal and Legislative Analysts.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And representing the Office of the Mayor, I see Nina Themulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I want to go back. I do see Nathan Poole from the President's Office, Fiscal and Legislative Analysts.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And also, member of the Committee and Representative of the Fourth District, Councilman Mark Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we do have a quorum. Before we begin, I would like to remind you that if you're not speaking, to please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized. When recognized, please identify yourself and the agency or organization that you represent. Once you have finished speaking, please put yourself back on mute. And let's begin. We're starting with Bill Number 21-0097. Repeal of Ordinance 90-425, Port Covington Planed Unit Development for the purpose of repealing certain ordinances which designated certain properties as an industrial planned unit development known as Port Covington and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on May 3, 2021. This bill was sponsored by Councilmember Costello. And just checking to see if Councilman Costello is on with us. And I don't see him, so we'll go ahead and move right into the committee, the agency reports. And we'll start with the Planning Commission. Who do we have that's going to represent for 20-009, I mean, 79, from the Planning Department?
Sure. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Committee Members. This is Tamara Woods with the Department of Planning.
Hi, Tamara.
And I'm gonna... Hi, how are you?
Fine. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna give a brief just report. It's not very long, but just for the committee's background. On June 24 of this year, the Planning Commission did vote to approve City Council Bill 21-0079. And just as a matter of background, why we chose to support and recommend approval is dates back to 2016, when the Planning Commission did adopt the Port Covington Master Plan, which called for many implementation items, including the repeal of the U R P, the amendment and/or repeal of the PUD, as well as the creation of the parcels and new streets. And all of the things that you see happening today really got underway in 2016. So this bill that you have before you today is really just seen as implementation of the master plan. And we've wholeheartedly supported and recommended to the developer for several years that we would like for them to repeal the PUD. So they're finally comfortable with that. And with that, the Planning Commission does support the repeal of the PUD. So I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Do we have any questions at this time? From the Committee to the Planning?
Hey, Madam Chair.
Oh. Is Councilman Costello... Oh, Councilman? Did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for being tardy. My previous meeting went over. Just wanted to say that I'm fully supportive of this action, obviously as a sponsor, and having worked closely with the development team, as well as Department of Planning, over the years. This is critically important to get done, to support the project moving forward, and happy to answer any questions. And want to thank you, Madam Chair, for hearing this hearing in such a timely fashion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. And also want to recognize Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the Third District, Member of the Committee, and also Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Member of the Committee.
Madam Chair, sorry to be late.
Next, we'll move to the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals. I know they deferred to planning, but is... Did someone want to make that?
Hi. Hi, Madam Chair, Nina Themulus, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMCA stands by its report and deferring to planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Transportation, Liam Davis.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. City Solicitor.
Hi, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Rulie on behalf of the Law Department. We approved the bill for form and legal sufficiency. And we note now that the zoning code changed in 2019 to require findings of fact for PUD repeals. So the facts that need to be found are listed in Section 13205 of the zoning code, and they're in our report. And so, assuming those facts are found, the Law Department would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Stephanie Murdoch with Housing.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdoch, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this legislation. Thank you.
Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Nikki Davis, Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our report in support of this bill.
Thank you. Department of Public Works. Is someone here for the Department of Public Works?
Madam Chair, Marcia and Janelle from DPW were unable to connect. They're having some Internet issues. But Nina Themulus, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. DPW stands by its report in support of the legislation.
Thank you. The Fire Department. Do we have a representative from the Fire Department?
Madam Chair, Nina Themulus, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. Chief Clark wasn't able to join this afternoon, but they stand by their report and have no objection to the passage of the legislation.
Thank you. And the Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Committee Members. This is Brett Thorne with the Parking Authority. We have reviewed the legislation, and we do not oppose passage of the bill.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee at this point? Okay, we're now going to take public testimony. And just quickly, computer users, please use the raise hand function. If you wish to testify, when called upon, please state your name. Attendees who call in by phone will be unmuted one by one. Callers will hear two beeps when unmuted. If you do not wish to testify, please say so. If you do wish to testify, please state your name. And we're checking to see if there's any raised hands for this bill. And I see one for John Lauria. John Lauria? You're on.
Madam... Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, well, thank you. John Lauria from Ballard Spar Law Firm. He representing the developer at Port Covington. I think the reports have been clear. I'll just add that this is something we've been wanting to do. We know Planning has been wanting to do it for quite some time. It was always contemplated that this PUD would be repealed because Transform Baltimore much better accommodates and was intended, of course, to accommodate this development. The, at the time, at the time that we first did the master planning, the zoning code, Transform Baltimore, was still potentially subject to appeal. The PUD itself was essential to development of that part of Port Covington, so we left it in place. But it was always, as you've heard now, the intention to repeal it. So we're finally doing that fairly straightforward. But we appreciate the support from the Planning Department throughout, of course, and the Council and this committee. Adam Jen from Weller Development, the developer of Port Covington, is also on the phone. He may or may not have raised his hand, but he might wish to say a few words. But I just wanted to thank you and offer any further explanation that the committee might need. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, John, and thank you for also going over the findings report. And Adam Jen, you do have your hand up. Did you want to comment as well?
Yes, Madam Chair. And thank you, Madam Chair and Councilmembers, for your time this afternoon. My name is Adam Jen, and I'm the Managing Director of Development at Weller Development Company. We're the developer responsible for Port Covington. We just want to thank you for your time today. As John discussed, we're here today in furtherance of the Port Covington Master Plan established in 2016. And for those of you who have visited the site or driven I-95 recently, we're very proud to be underway with 10 acres of roads and rights away, 1.1 million vertical square feet of development, and over 400 full-time employees working on the site each day. We couldn't be more excited, and we're just getting started. So we want to thank the Council, specifically Councilman Costello, Tamara Woods from the Department of Planning for your ongoing support. And we thank you again, Councilmembers, for your time this afternoon. To the extent you have any questions, John and I are available. Thank you again, and we look forward to passage.
Thank you. And just going back to Tamara Woods, is there anything you wanted to add about the findings of facts?
We... I can just add that we would support the Law Department.
Okay. I guess I'm looking specifically for something... The repeal of the planned unit development is in the public interest. Is it? Can you just explain that a little bit?
Sure. This, one of the things about the Port Covington Master Plan as a whole, as you may or may not know, it's about roughly 260 acres, which is furthering the city's, you know, comprehensive master plan for regeneration of neighborhoods throughout the city, as well as bringing in more income and population to the city. So this repeal actually, by removing a layer, actually helped in furthering the master plan goals and the redevelopment goals for Port Covington. And I can go down the list. Would you like something on the second, the second point as well?
So I just, I guess, for the record, so this is the approved final plan?
Yes. So the master plan for Port Covington, we approved, I believe, don't quote the exact date, but I believe it was June 23 of 2016. And we did, the Planning Commission did adopt the Port Covington Master Plan.
Okay. And again, for the record, it's no longer necessary in light of the property's underlying zoning?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Does the committee have any further questions? And John, your hand is still up. Did you want to comment again? John Lauria? Your hand is still raised.
Yes, Madam, thank you very much. I know, I just wanted to make sure that we closed the loop with respect to the findings. I would just simply amplify what Ms. Woods has said, that it is in the public interest because it will facilitate further development and frankly, avoid some potential confusion in the overlap going forward. And as I said in my comments, clearly, in light of the properties underlying zoning via Transform Baltimore, the PUD is no longer necessary. So I think you should have the findings that you need to comply with the law. And once again, I'm happy to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Hillary, any further comments? Is this, is this all correct? And it does apply to the law?
Yeah, I mean, everything seems fine on my end.
Okay. We're now checking to see if there's any callers. Okay. So John was the only caller? Oops. We're going back again. Yes, there is one other... There is a caller?
This is Marcia. I couldn't sign in via Internet, so I'm on my phone. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And you do, you're just kind of backing up as a favorable report from Department of Public Works, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Marcia. Okay, and that's it for caller. Any discussion from the committee on this bill? Hearing none. Do we have a motion for the finding of the facts? Committee? I make a motion to move the finding of the facts. Do I have a second?
No move, Council.
Second.
So moved by Stokes. I guess we can do this one all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. By, that was Dorsey. Any opposed? Hearing none. The finding of the facts have been approved. Okay, is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Stokes. Second by Dorsey. Chair Middleton, yes.
Madam Chair. I just want to let you know that Councilwoman Ramos said that she's having some issues. So she's trying to log back on.
Oh, she's having issues with... Okay.
Yeah.
To vote, okay. Did she text you?
No, she put it in a group, she put it in the chat.
Oh, okay. Oh, there's a chat, okay. She's logging on again. Okay, we'll get through the vote, and we'll see if she's on when we get back to her.
She's back.
Oh, yes, yes. Back just in time. So you're...
I'm a yes.
Okay. So we're taking the vote now on the bill. So Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes? Councilmember Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes? Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes? Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes? Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. This bill moves unanimously out of committee, and we'll go to the next council meeting. Thank you. Next bill, Bill Number 21-0105. It's the RPP Area 26 Campbell Lane and their revisions with the purpose of altering the applicable block faces included in residential parking plan Area 26 Campbell Lane and altering the hours of applicable parking restrictions to be consistent with the Prior Parking Authority of Baltimore City Administrative Order. This bill was introduced on July 19, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Conway. Councilmember Conway, would you like to comment? Is Council... Councilmember Conway? Okay, for some reason...
Sorry, I was having some difficulty.
Okay. Would you like to comment on the bill you sponsored?
Yeah, so this is in memory of Dante Barksdale. Of course, a man who's really dedicated himself to Baltimore and... Wait, hold on.
Wait, Councilmember, this is the bill that you sponsored, the RPP?
Let me see.
To make sure that's right.
Yeah, no, that's... Hold on.
Hold on. The residential, you had put in...
Ah, yes. Okay. Sorry about that.
The Barksdale is right after that.
That's right after, okay. I had it in the wrong order. Forgive me. This, so, long story short, this is to change the parking for Campbell Lane. We've noticed that there's been some issues with parking in the area. We just got a 21st Century School. We have a couple of businesses along the York Road Corridor. Campbell Lane just comes right off of York, the York Road Corridor. And a number of residents in the area have been getting ticketed from parking on the north side of the, north side of the block. If I recall correctly, the north side of the block has a three-hour parking limit. The south side of the block does not have a parking limit. And we're going to make the change here so that folks don't keep continuing to have that inconvenience. It wouldn't make all that much of a difference to the area. And we've already had the opportunity to talk to businesses in the area, understand how it affects their ability to have parking for, for businesses. So it's the same amount of parking. It just really changes the parking restrictions so that residents who live right across the street from this northern part of Campbell Lane are not continuing to get a number of citations for parking right across the street from the house. That's all.
Committee members, any questions to the sponsor of the bill? If not, we'll move on to the agency representative reports.
And we'll start... Madam Chair, yes, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Dorsey.
Thank you. Councilman Conway, you're, just to make this clear, you have RPP on one side of the street, and you are extending it to the other side of the street as well?
No, this would, if I recall, this removes... Let's see.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't...
It would...
We can go ahead and have Planning explain in detail, if you'd like, Council.
Sure. I'll allow Planning to explain that, just so we can...
All right. Yeah, I had the, I was trying to look at the bill, and then I had opened up the wrong bill packet, and so I just...
But Councilman Dorsey, I made the same mistake, don't worry. The long and short of what this attempts to do is to, a number of years ago, then Councilman Bill Henry changed this parking to make sure that there was more strict parking because what we saw then was that the businesses had a lot of business, and they were taking up residential parking spots. What it resulted in is that residents were still parking there sometimes and were then getting fined after three hours. On the southern part of the block, there, it is residential parking. If you are visiting a business and parking there, you may get ticketed. And that's not an issue. It's just the northern part of the block, we're finding that residents are getting ticketed because it's not residential parking. And so we want to remove that three-hour restriction.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at the bill now, and it looks like... I mean, maybe, I'm sure Planning can explain this.
Can we go ahead and get Planning to do a little more detail?
Yeah.
They have no objection. Department of Planning, can you pick up from here and give the committee a little more detail of this bill?
So, hi, this is Tamara Woods with the Department of Planning. And unfortunately, I'm not able, as I didn't work on this particular bill, so I'm not familiar with the details. I was just here standing in to support our no objection report. So maybe someone from the Parking Authority?
Okay. Someone from the, could we have the representative from the Parking Authority? I see no opposition. Did you want to elaborate on this issue, Parking Authority?
I am actually one of the planners for Parking Authority. I coordinated with somebody in the RPP division. And to my knowledge, everybody was, everyone was in support of the restriction changes in the area between coordination of the school, the community, and the council member. So we had no objections for it. I don't know too many details about it, as I wasn't heavily involved with the process, but maybe I could reach out to somebody and get back to Councilman Dorsey on the, on more details about the RPP changes.
The City Solicitor's Office, I see there's an amendment. Is, who's speaking on this bill, from the City Solicitor's Office?
Good afternoon.
Hi, Victor.
From the City, from the City Lot Department. You know, I can read the bill. I can't tell you how it changed, what's happening. If I can just read the bill, and then we're talking about a parking restriction be posted and enforced for two-hour limits. So I know that's new, that's new language here. We've got an exception. But really, you'd have to have the Parking Authority really dive down to figure out exactly what is changing here. The amendment that I've offered is just a small technical amendment. On page one, it says the, you can make this change under authority of Article 31, Section 10-18A. Well, that's wrong. It's 10-19A. And that's my little technical amendment. Other than that, the Lot Department will stand behind. It's bill report, which basically says we'll approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Madam Chair. Oh, you're muted, Madam Chair.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you. I'm going to try to more adequately answer the question that Councilman Dorsey had. I think, Councilman Dorsey, you were asking, does this extend the RPP to the north side? Yes. So the north side used to be RPP. It was changed in order to, to provide parking for, for some of the businesses in the area. And it was added as a three-hour limit. Unfortunately, because it was no longer part of the RPP, residents who live right across the street were parking across the street and getting fined after three hours. And so we want to re-include it as part of the RPP with a, I think, two-hour limit. Just as it is in the south, it would be the same on both sides. And that would prevent residents from being fined for parking right on their block. But it still allows for parking for folks who are visiting the establishments along York Road. We had an opportunity to talk to, one, the residents, two, the businesses, and three, the school, to make sure that everyone was okay with all of the, with the changes. And that's effectively, you know, we got support from everybody. And there's really no, no folks coming out against this. This was at the request of the community. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Thank you. I've just read through the bill several times, and I'm still unclear. Maybe, I don't think that it says exactly what you just said. The way I'm reading this bill is in, on page one, line 26, we've got existing language from the existing RPP, and we're striking out where it says "odd side only" and changing that to say "both sides." So we're extending, we're extending the 500 block of Campbell Lane to have RPP not on just one side, but on both sides. So we're adding the even side, which is the north side of the street.
That's right.
In line six through... In lines six through eight on page two, it says that throughout this parking area, this RPP area, the limit is two hours. And then below that, it says the only exception to that is that on the even side, the north side, where we're adding, is going to be three hours. The south side is still going to be two hours, but the even side, the new side that we're adding, is going to be three hours.
So it, it already is three hours, to clarify. So right now, it is three hours, but it is not RPP. So what happens is residents who live across the street, there are no homes on the north side.
There's just signs there that say three-hour parking?
Yes. So what happens is residents on the south side park on the north side and get ticketed.
Okay, this all makes sense now.
Okay.
I need it to make sense for me. Thank you so much.
Good, no problem. All great questions. Glad I could clarify.
Okay, that's real weird. Thank you.
At this point, any other questions from other members of the committee on this bill? So I'll pick back up from Victor. You had mentioned, so there is an amendment?
There is a very, there is a very small amendment on page one. And that is, if you look, it's on, it's on page one, line eight. That says 10-18A. My amendment says 10-19A.
All right. Thank you. The Department of Transportation?
Madam Chair, Liam Davis with Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Some, Department of Police, I see Shannon Conway?
Madam Chair, Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator for BPD. We stand by our report and have no objection to the bill.
Thank you. Any questions thus far from the committee moving on for public testimony? And we see no raised hands. Checking for callers? And I don't think we have any callers. Is that correct? Okay, no callers. Okay, we do have an amendment on this bill. Do I have a motion to move the amendment?
I move the law department's amendment.
Second.
Moved by Dorsey, second by Conway. For the amendment, Chair Middleton, yes? Can we do the, any, what is it? All, all in favor, say, all in favor, say yea, yea?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, this amendment is moved. And may I have a motion to move the bill as amended?
So moved.
Second, Bullock.
Okay, so moved by, was that Dorsey? Or was that?
Yes, ma'am.
Dorsey, and it was second by Conway? Or Glu, who was, who seconded? Bullock.
I think Bullock commented.
Thank you, John. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilmember Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilmember Dorsey? Is a yes. Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilmember Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will move as amended to second reader. The next bill is bill number 21-0089. City property, naming the property, property located at Ward 6, Section 9, Block 1318, Lot 2, also known as 199 North Caroline Street, to be the Dante Barksdale Square for the purpose of naming the city property located at Ward 6, Section 9, Block 1318, Lot 2, also known as 199 North Caroline Street, to be Dante Square. This bill was introduced on May 17, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Council President Mosby. Nikki Thompson, did you want to say anything on behalf of the president?
Yes, Nikki Thompson, on behalf of Council President Mosby, we just want to, number one, thank the family and community and the city agencies that have worked to get this legislation to this point. As you previously stated, we introduced it in May. So very thankful also to you, Chair Middleton, for having the hearing today. And one more time, we just want to thank the family and we hope this is a great way to honor his life and legacy.
Thank you. And I know you had kind of worked on making sure that address was correct. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We'll start with the city solicitor. Favorable report, who's speaking from the city solicitor's office?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Landa DePietre for the Baltimore City Law Department. Law Department stands by its report. This is appropriate mechanism to name property owned by the city.
Thank you. The Planning Commission had a favorable report and we have...
Ivor Quansey.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. You're new to us.
I'm only in the...
I'm, oops, I'm sorry, you, you went out.
Virtual forum.
Could you repeat that?
I'm new to the ci, I'm not new to the city, just, I have not been to any of the virtual meetings previously, but I have been before the committees before.
Thank you for the clarification.
So on the 24th of June, the Planning Commission did have a favorable response. And I do once again thank the president's office in communication with myself as well as the family in making sure the address is correct. And just want to identify the clarification is that if you look up the address on Google Maps, it gives you an incorrect address. When you look up the address using the city's city view, the address and block and lot number are correct as stated in the bill. Just wanted to make sure that's a clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the correction. Department of Recreation and Parks?
Good afternoon, Chairwoman. This is Jenny Morgan, the Legislative Liaison for Recreation and Parks. We stand by our report.
Thank you. And that report is?
Favorable, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Department of Transportation?
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is in support of this council bill. The, the land is actually leftover right-of-way that was purchased by the city during the first half of the 20th century for the purposes of widening Fayette Street. So this, this little triangular parcel plaza is the remnants of that right-of-way from that purchase. And DOT is in full support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Real Estate?
Good afternoon, Casey Kelleher, reporting on behalf of Department of Real Estate in the Compteur's Office. We stand by our report as favorable. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Finance?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Zanya Gurovich, Department of Finance. We stand by our report and do not oppose the passage of this bill.
Thank you. And Baltimore Development Corporation?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Micah Fetz with the Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our report, and the report is favorable. The BDC supports passage of this bill.
Thank you. Any discussion from the committee at this point? We'll now go to public testimony and... Raised hands? And we have no raised hands. And we're checking to see if there's any callers. And there are no callers. So I need a motion to move the bill, number 21-0089.
Still moved.
So moved by Councilmember Conway. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second.
A second by Dorsey. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Yes. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. This bill moves favorable to second reader at the next council member. And I want to thank everyone for attending today's hearing. Have a nice day.